All right, now that the resident photographer is in the house, Mr. Burke, we're gonna reconvene from our recessed closed session. This is our 5:30 PM presentation period. I specifically made sure there was just one presentation tonight. Well, there's more than one presentation tonight, but one presentation for a group of really talented young people in our community. So with that, I'm gonna come down to the podium and we'll get this started. All right, get my notes up here tonight. So, tonight, we wanted to, and I understand there's a lot of parents and people that understand what's going on here in the room because you guys live it every day with your kids. But there's a lot of people that watch on TV. So I'm going to have Andrea, Hannah, is it Camilio? Camilo, did I say it right? Good, Camilo. Kaylee, Zack, and Mr. Bates, come on up here. And Shania, sorry, I forgot Shania. She's still sitting there. How could you forget Shania? Come on up here, guys, stand this way. We're gonna face the cameras that way. You're gonna be famous for about 15 minutes. I think we made Shania more famous in 15 minutes. I think we've made her a little more famous than them. I wanted to talk about these kids in our community. It is close to my heart when it comes to youth activities in our community. All our youth, since I've grown up here, have had a lot of opportunities in our community to do Little League, soccer, football, school sports. But there was something different that came in, and I could not find the date. When did you open up your studio? So 2013, Keon opened, Keon Studios here at Desert Hot Springs MMA Studios opened in Desert Hot Springs. And we all were going, "What is that?", as we drove by. A lot of us didn't know. As you see, I don't exercise a lot. So with that said, over time, with social media and listening to the kids in our community, this studio became more and more recognized in our community. And the name Eddie Bates became more and more recognized in our community as a leader. And this is what I'd like to recognize as mayor of our community on behalf of the city council is leadership in our community, especially when it comes to youth. Because the youth is our future. We hear that all the time, but it's true. And in Desert Hot Springs, our youth don't always get to travel and do things that a lot of people do in other areas of the country. I know friends of mine that have grown up here that still haven't left the state, sometimes not even the region, meaning the county or the city. And so to be able to have kids go to another state compete, and to have two of our kids go to a different country and compete, was just phenomenal for me as the mayor of Desert Hot Springs. And I couldn't be more proud. And so I was asked by Mr. Bates to meet these kids when they got back, they got back from Tennessee, and before the two young women went to Rome, to meet them and talk with them. And I was just fascinated by what they had to say and what they've had to do since they've started this. So I wanted to kinda go through where they were and what they did. I know I'm gonna get some of these pronunciations wrong, so Mr. Bates, you're gonna help me with this. So the very first fight that we wanted to recognize was in Tennessee. Where in Tennessee were you guys? Memphis. So they weren't going to watch country music. They were going to fight for Desert Hot Springs. And they did well, very well. And so we wanted to introduce some of the kids that are here today and talk about what they did. Now Andrea, there she goes. I can see her volleyball stuff. So she rushed here, she rushed here from volleyball today. She was, come on up here. She was at the JV game in Banning, and Dad got her and picked her up and got her here on time. Now, you went to Tennessee, and you won. You competed in the 135-pound youth girls' division, and you won. With a Peruvian necktie? That sounds scary. So with that, you, what did you win? You won a, is it a gold medal, a first-place medal?
Yeah, gold medal.
Gold medal. So she won a gold medal in Tennessee. Okay, I'm gonna come back to you. Now Hannah, Hannah, come on up here. Now Hannah won a unanimous decision in the 95-pound youth girls' division. Did you do a Peruvian necktie at one time? Did you try that?
I got the arm bar.
Arm bar, yeah, it sounds even more painful. So she, she won by a unanimous decision. All right, come back to you in a minute. And Camilo? He came to my office, and I couldn't believe, I thought he was just there because the girls were there. But he, no? No, you're not there. No, he came in there, and so, listen to this. So he gets there, and he's about to compete, and they had nobody in his weight or age group? His fighter. The person that he was gonna fight fell out. So he had a choice, and he decided to fight someone two years older than him. And he did very well. He ended up losing to an arm bar, but the reason he lost was this kid was a little bigger?
Oh, it was quite a bit bigger.
Yeah, quite a bit bigger. So you can imagine this. How much did he weigh? 65 pounds. And the person that he was competing against?
He was a couple inches taller, I mean, he was 72 pounds and two years older.
And two years older. So he gave him a good fight. And you're gonna, you're gonna come back and beat him next time, right? And it was his first fight. So travels all the way to Tennessee, and, and, and so, so, now they call you sensei, right? So the sensei comes to him and says, "I'm gonna, we don't have anybody to fight, but there is somebody two years older than you." And what'd you say? All right. He said, "Okay, let's do it." All right, I'll come back to you, Camilo. Now Kaylee? Now you fought in the 100-pound youth championship, and it says right here you dominated the fight. Now would anybody disagree with that? But she fought a hometown girl, right? So the decision went there. But we know who the real winner was, right? All right. And Zack? You fought in the 120, you weigh 120 pounds? Okay, okay. You fought in the 120-pound division. Now you were defeated, now this sounds even more painful, a triangle choke? Did it hurt? Little bit? Okay. That's the toughness in you right there. But congratulations for going and being there. Thank you. So what I wanted to do for everyone here is recognize them from the mayor's office and for the city council. And I wanted to say, this is certificate of recognition. This is the mayor and the city council. The city of Desert Hot Springs hereby honors your names in, for participating in the Attitude MMA competition on July 20th, 2019, in Memphis, Tennessee. And then, can I call you sensei? I know I don't, I don't. Okay, Eddie, come, would you like to, would you like to say anything about the Tennessee fight? About the kids that I'm missing here?
Yeah, definitely.
And I'm gonna hand these out while you do that.
For some of you guys that don't know these kids, you look at Camilo, he's small, but what are you, eight now? He started with, he started with us when we was four. And for four years, all he talked about was going into the cage. And that's one of the reasons why he said yes to taking the bigger fight. It didn't matter who it was, he wanted it. And that's the heart he has. He's got a big heart. All these kids, they've trained for four to five years. I think the majority of them are actually training for, testing in four weeks for their black belt. So they put a lot of dedication into everything they do, a lot of dedication. With going and testing for the black belt, not only do you have to be a student in our school, you have to be a student at your school as well. Upstand, upstanding citizen in your community. They do a lot, do a lot. They have to be a good child at their home as well. So there's a lot that goes into what they do. It's not just going out and competing in the cage. They have to be a good individual. And you've got six really good individuals right here. So, congratulations.
Shania, you didn't compete in Tennessee, or you did?
No.
And why did you not compete in Tennessee? Yeah, they're afraid of her is what I was trying to get at. If you haven't watched tonight, she, she was our co, what do we call that for the holiday parade? Grand marshal in last parade. And she's been an inspiration to me and this community for what she's accomplished and where she's going in this sport. I've watched MMA on TV. I like watching it on TV, but I never thought that we would have such a passion in our community for it. I wanted to talk about the next trip. The next trip was to Rome, Italy. And all of a sudden, we get these inundated of text messages and family members trying to raise money in a short period of time. They literally were told, "Here's the tournament. You gotta commit by this date." And they literally had, it was like 14 days to raise, couple of weeks to raise thousands of dollars to send these, these, these girls to Italy. And two of them were able to do that. Andrea, Shania, I want you guys come forward. So when they got to Italy, it was, you guys were there for five days?
Yeah.
You flew in, you had a day, and then you were fighting, and then you had another day. Yeah, it was just nonstop. So I was kinda following them on Facebook, watching them, and they were, they were as busy as could be. Now, the United States set the tone in the world championships with 13 submissions? Just the girls? Just the girls? And then the United States had the most gold medals with a total of 26. Is this just girls overall? So 26 medals. The next to follow would be the UK at 14. So how proud could you be of the United States? Let alone, we had two girls from this little town in California called Desert Hot Springs go all the way to Italy to fight in these fights. Shania and Andrea are both national champions in the US, and their hard work and dedication earned them the right to the world stage. Andrea competes in the 135-pound division, and Shania competes in the 105. Do you guys fight each other ever? Yeah? Who's, who's better? Ah, I like to, every time I say that, they kinda look at each other like, "Yeah, I dare you." So these were, and they were top competitors from Russia, the UK, South Africa, France, and it goes on from there. It's all, I mean, countries from all over the world were there to be represented. Now Andrea ended up winning a silver medal. Andrea, most likely, or we're pretty much, pretty sure she fractured her foot. She was in a cast for how many weeks? Three weeks. But she didn't know it until after the fight, because she had so much adrenaline going. So she fought with a broken foot. And then almost won the gold. She felt short due to a referee interference. I don't know exactly what that is, but I'll let you talk about it.
She's at our school called Arlo Asian. But recently, she's found this new move called the throw-in. So now she's out. And she's been very successful lately with tap, tap, uh, tapping. In Rome, she had the same exact moves, had a pin, and, uh, cocked the head, uh, buzz. So it's probably illegal. So you hold off, and she has the last 10 seconds.
Wow, so close. But that's about sports. It happens. We all know there's humans out there that referee and do stuff like that. And it happens, every week it happens to my football team. Shania, she actually won a gold medal. She beat Valentina Vakova. That just sounds threatening, doesn't it? But you weren't intimidated one bit, were you? I know you too well now. And she, and you beat her with an arm bar. So you basically took her arm, and you were gonna take it off if she didn't tap out, right? And you ended up having five bouts leading up to your gold medal, and you won each one submission. That's awesome. I wanted to say congratulations. I wanted to say that, again, in Desert Hot Springs, you don't get to travel to Rome. I've never traveled to Rome. I've never traveled to Europe. And I'm old. So to have this opportunity at such a young age, to understand that the world is there, and that you're not just stuck in this bubble in Desert Hot Springs is, is very heartwarming. And to represent what you guys have done here in this community is even more heartwarming. So I wanted to say thank you. I wanted to present you with accommodation from the mayor's office and the city council for winning the world championship gold.
Thank you.
And winning the world championship in silver. So thank you to both of you. Now, I always open up this opportunity, would you guys like to say anything before we have Eddie say a few more words about you? You don't have to, but if you'd like to. Hannah, I love it.
I would like to say that we are very thankful for our coach. And a lot of this, a lot of Shania, Andrea, and all of us, we wouldn't be here without our coach. So, yeah, we would like, I would like to say thank you to our coach, Sensei Eddie.
I apologize, I said Hannah and Kaylee. Anyone else like to say anything? Okay, you don't have to. That's okay. That's a, that's in a very comfortable setting. Before we end tonight, I wanted to say a couple of words about Eddie Bates. I, I don't, people send me names of people in our community all the time, and they say, "Oh, you gotta give this person", because they went out and they picked up some trash, or "You gotta give this a person an award because they fed a homeless person", or "You gotta give this person a recognition because they, he stopped a thief." And that, that's all very noble, and I think everyday life, we would all do those types of things. But, you know, it's people that step up and beyond. And Eddie doesn't have to do what he's doing because he has another life. He has, he builds homes, and he's construction, he does construction. But he obviously has a passion for this. If you read his bio online, he has multiple belts and multiple different, you know, categories of MMAs, that's fair enough to say. So I know you're a black belt. So if I ever need security, I know who to call. He'll probably send the girls over to protect me. Yes. But I'd like you to come up here, and what I'd like to say about you is, is it's not just that you have a mixed martial arts studio in our community, and yet you're, you're giving back to our youth of our community and making them better people. I watch social media, I don't get out of bed when he says 6:30, "It's time to run." But a lot of people do, and you've not just motivated the kids of our community, you've motivated parents in our community to, to get up and exercise and make their lives better, healthy, and better mentally. And I can see that. And so what I wanted to say was thank you. And I have accommodation for you also, for your service and your leadership and being a role model in our community. And I'd like you to hopefully hang that on your wall someday. And this is something that I don't do very often. I've been mayor coming up on four years, and I've only given a few of these out. But this is the key to the city, that we'd like you to hang on your wall. It really wasn't working the doors, but it is the key to the city. So with that said. The mic is yours.
Wow, was not expecting this today. I wouldn't be here without you guys, and without you guys. You guys push me every day, which allows me to push you back. I learn just as much from you as you learn from me. And that's why I'm here. My number one job is not my construction job. And this is not a job. This is, sometimes, you know, everybody asks me, you know, "What is your job?". And martial arts is not my job. Martial arts is something I enjoy thoroughly. I actually gave up construction for five years to teach martial arts because I enjoyed it so much. It was kinda like being on vacation for five years. It was really enjoyable. I got the opportunity to go back to construction, but my number one passion, and always will be number one passion, is teaching and my kids. So thank you very much for being who you guys are, because you guys helped me a lot, a whole lot. Thank you, parents, as well. Thank you.
And this is, before, before we do all the pictures and everything, this is an opportunity. Anybody wants to join your studios, more than welcome to walk in. What's the best time and dates or days to do that?
There's so many, there's so many times and dates. I will give you one time. It's a free day. It's a free to the, the community. Every Saturday, we have a nine o'clock kickboxing class. It's no contact, only mitts, cardio. It's free to everybody in, in the city, in the valley. If you wanna come train, nine o'clock, come train on Saturday.
He had me until he said cardio. So with that, we're going to, if you guys would like to stay up here, we have some cameras. We'll take a few pictures, and we'll recess until six o'clock. Okay, we can do that. If the council would come down and be part of the pictures. All right, with that, this is the City of Desert Hot Springs Regular Meeting of the City Council. The City Council serving as a successor agency to the redevelopment agency board for September 17th, 2019. This is our 6:00 PM regular session of the city council. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Betts?
Present.
Councilmember Gardner?
Present.
Councilmember Griffiths?
Present.
Mayor Pro Tempi?
Present.
Mayor Mattis?
Present. Before we do our invocation tonight, I just wanted to have Gerald, can you put that picture up? Before we do all the pictures and everything, this is an opportunity. Anybody wants to join your studios, more than welcome to walk in. What's the best time and dates or days to do that?
There's so many, there's so many times and dates. I will give you one time. It's a free day. It's a free to the, the community. Every Saturday, we have a nine o'clock kickboxing class. It's no contact, only mitts, cardio. It's free to everybody in, in the city, in the valley. If you wanna come train, nine o'clock, come train on Saturday.
He had me until he said cardio. So with that, we're going to, if you guys would like to stay up here, we have some cameras. We'll take a few pictures, and we'll recess until six o'clock. Okay, we can do that. If the council would come down and be part of the pictures. So if I ever need security, I know who to call. He'll probably send the girls over to protect me. Yes. But I'd like you to come up here, and what I'd like to say about you is, is it's not just that you have a mixed martial arts studio in our community, and yet you're, you're giving back to our youth of our community and making them better people. I watch social media, I don't get out of bed when he says 6:30, "It's time to run." But a lot of people do, and you've not just motivated the kids of our community, you've motivated parents in our community to, to get up and exercise and make their lives better, healthy, and better mentally. And I can see that. And so what I wanted to say was thank you. And I have accommodation for you also, for your service and your leadership and being a role model in our community. And I'd like you to hopefully hang that on your wall someday. And this is something that I don't do very often. I've been mayor coming up on four years, and I've only given a few of these out. But this is the key to the city, that we'd like you to hang on your wall. It really wasn't working the doors, but it is the key to the city. So with that said. The mic is yours.
Was not expecting this today. I wouldn't be here without you guys, and without you guys. God, for those young people here at our high school that were troubled. God, we speak that we're able to find some way to reach even them, God. Lord, bring comfort to all of our parents that are sleeping in terror at night, to all of our students who are afraid to go to school. Lord, and give strength and comfort to our city officials and our police staff and the EMTs and all that who may be called on in time of an emergency. Father, we understand that as we unify, that's how you can get the glory through all of this. And so, God, now, we stand as a community united, saying that we will not tolerate evil in our city. We will not tolerate these type of attacks in our city. We'll stand firmly against them, united in prayer, under one name, saying, "God, we're here and we're calling on your help right now." And so, God, we speak peace, we speak love, we speak joy and unity. We ask that you go ahead of us throughout this meeting. Lord, let your Spirit prevail even now, oh, God, and we thank you. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you very much. If we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, I'm going to have Mayor Pro Tem Pi lead us tonight.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our next item is the city attorney's report on closed session. Ms. Murray?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. We do have one reportable action item. The item was existing litigation, the matter of Garcia versus City of Desert Hot Springs. The council voted five-zero to settle the matter, pretty much at no cost to the city. The settlement agreement is, is by and between Robert E. Garcia and Gary Garcia, residents of Desert Hot Springs, City of Desert Hot Springs, and Best Development Group, which is the developer. Pertinent settlement terms is that the developer will be paying for the attorney's fees in this matter, that the city will, will adopt a proposed supplemental CEQA guidelines and offer some supplemental training to staff. With that, that, and I don't know if I said this, the council voted five-zero, but with that, that concludes my report.
Thank you. At this time, we'll approve the agenda in whole, including the consent calendar. We only have two items on the consent calendar. Would anybody like to pull those items?
I have a correction to the minutes.
Go ahead.
I did not talk during council member comments. Councilmember Betts spoke for me because of my cold.
With those corrections to be made in the minutes, is there a motion?
I'll move.
We'll move the agenda plus the consent calendar in whole with corrections. There is a second. Any more discussion? Would anybody like to speak on this item? Any items on the consent calendar, please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. We'll now go into public comments. If you're here to speak on items not on the agenda, you can fill out a blue sheet in the back, take it up to the city clerk. City clerk will put you in order. Our first comment will be from Jennifer Cusack from SCE, Southern California Edison.
Good evening, mayor and council members. Thank you for having me this evening. I'm Jennifer Cusack, Government Relations Manager with Southern California Edison, and I cover the City of Desert Hot Springs. So I'm here to share with you and bring to your attention our wildfire mitigation plan. Wildfire and preventing wildfire related to our system has become our top priority. Wildfire, the intensity and frequency of these fires in California has become a greater risk. Ten of the twenty most, or ten of the twenty largest fires have happened in the last four years. And, and so, it's not just the wildfire is new, it's the intensity and it's coming into our urban settings. And so, I gave to you a packet today with a deck and with some information. In there is a map of the wild, high fire risk areas as defined by the California Public Utilities Commission and CAL FIRE. And there are sections of high fire risk in Desert Hot Springs, specifically the mountain as, as we have coming out of the San Bernardino Mountains and the Josh Tree National Park into Desert Hot Springs. And you'll see in there, there's tier one and tier two areas. So part of our plan involves improving our infrastructure, vegetation management, and then also public safety power shut off. And so, how we operate our system is changing. We've been doing overhead or an enhanced overhead inspections. This is aerial inspections of all of our equipment in the high fire risk area. We've been doing ground inspections as well. So since December of last year, we've inspected every piece of equipment in the high fire risk areas defined by this map, not just once, but multiple times. And anything that needed to be fixed, we have been fixing those and then also upgrading to new equipment. And this includes composite poles, covered conductor, fast directing fuses, spark limiting fuses. Also, we have added additional situational awareness capabilities with additional weather stations, better forecasting, high-definition cameras. And, and this is all available online. We monitor this twenty-four seven. And so, you'll see in here also, you can view the cameras at alertwildfire.org and also the weather stations at misawest.utah.edu. As part of our vegetation management, we've increased our trim zone from four feet to twelve, and we are looking to remove more trees. That could be a problem. So part of the problem, of course, is things landing on our lines and creating a spark. Public safety power shut off is probably, it could be the most impactful, and this is where we would preemptively turn off the power if a high fire risk, high wind, low humidity event occurred. And we've had a couple warnings in Desert Hot Springs. We're getting used to the weather, I think, at our situational awareness center. We're looking for wind patterns, for low humidity, for times when maybe a small spark could turn into a massive fire. And what we're trying to prevent is that spark. We can't control the wind, we can't control the vegetation always, but we can control that spark from our system, and that's what we're trying to eliminate. And so, by de-energizing the system, we can potentially save, save property damage and lives. So that's our goal. Of course, this is all in the interest of public safety, and our goal is to communicate both with you and our customers about the potential of this and then also how to be prepared. So we would do this sometimes a week out. We can see these events coming. Usually, we'll give warning to, to a day ahead. Sometimes, we may not have that much time, but our goal is to communicate with our customers as soon as we know that this is a possibility. And then, if we de-energize, we will call them and tell them, "We turned off your power because of public safety power shut off." Then we won't re-energize until we've had a chance to inspect the lines and make sure it's safe, make sure that wind event has passed or that risk has passed. And then, when we re-energize, we will let them know we've re-energized. So if their power doesn't come back on, they know that something else is wrong. So causes of power outage can happen for any reason, maintenance outages, emergent outages, car hit pole. So our message to our customers is to always be prepared, and so, we continue to support that messaging directly with our customers, and we would like to partner with the city on that. There's a lot of useful information in here. All this information is on our website at se.com. And of course, I'd be happy to meet with any of you individually if you have additional questions and any questions from the public, you can also forward to me.
Three minutes is not a lot of time, so I gave you a little extra time just because there's so much information out there. But again, if someone needs to get ahold of you, the way, how can they get ahold of you?
So my, my cellphone is seven six zero four one nine thirty-five ten. It's Jennifer Cusack.
All right, thank you, Jennifer. Dot Reed, followed by Eddie Johnson.
Good evening, mayor, council, staff, and citizens. I'm Dot Reed, been around here for a long time. And I used to stand right up here at almost every meeting, but tonight, I'm representing the Historical Society of Desert Hot Springs. There are a group of people who are working diligently every Friday morning to go through all of the items that people have handed over to us that are historical. And in those items, we found a desert sun picture, an article from nineteen sixty-four, when Cabot Yerxa was a charter member of the Historical Society. So this is our fifty-fifth anniversary. And in honor of that, because the dues at that time were three dollars. Imagine that, dues for a year for three dollars. So guess what? If you're a new member or a returning member, you can join for two thousand and twenty for three dollars. How about that? What a, what a bargain. I brought you a great deal. And you can do this at our soup supper, which will be October the twenty-fourth at Miracle Springs from six to eight. And our speaker will be the Assistant City Manager. Her name went right out of my head.
Doria Wells.
Come on, Chuck, help me.
Doria Wells.
I, I am sorry.
That's okay.
But, you know.
We try to forget Doria all the time. We just can't. She won't let us. We try to forget Doria all the time. She won't let us.
Oh, oh, no. You don't really do that. I, I know better, and I couldn't handle my cane and my papers, and so, that's my excuse. I'm sorry about that, but probably you got more attention this way. So I'm taking reservations for our soup supper on the twenty-fourth, it's a Thursday. We have them three times a year, in October, January, and April, on the fourth Thursday of the month. And if you haven't been to them, I know many of you have, but if you haven't, it's time you started joining the Historical Society for three dollars and attending soup suppers. And then, you can attend our annual meeting, which will be December the eighth at the VFW. And son of a gun, I don't know what time it is, but I'll let you know if you call me for reservations. So I have some flyers in the back with my email and my phone number on it. So I'm taking reservations whenever you're ready. Thank you very much.
Well, I have no excuse anymore, Dot. It was, it used to be twenty dollars a joint for a year, correct?
Oh, it was twenty-five.
Twenty-five.
Look what a bargain you've got.
Now it's three dollars. I have no excuse.
Oh, it's only for two thousand and twenty.
Yes, I gotta remember that.
And it's only for people, our new members or have been away for a year or two.
Nice, and Doria has plenty of history growing up here in town, so it's probably going to be exciting to listen to her speak, so we might come there.
I'm looking for you to all join. You don't want to miss a deal like that.
No, we don't. Thank you, Dot. Eddie Johnson, followed by Florence Martin. Florence is the last speaker that I have.
If you're going for three bucks, you got half a cup of soup, right?
Yeah.
Name is Eddie Johnson, Veterans Park caretaker. Sorry, I'm not in uniform, but this is relaxation day. Mayor, council members, city officials, and residents. I've got something to say about Palm Drive. I have a complaint. It looks nice on Palm Drive. Now I figured out why they call it Palm Drive, all the palm trees when you come into town.
That's right.
These construction guys work Saturdays, too, and they're really doing a good job, except for that traffic. So I took Indian Canyon to get here and I left at four-thirty. No, I didn't. But the traffic is backlin, oh, my goodness, it back, it backs up to about Dillon Road, but that's okay. When this thing is done, you have all the lights on Palm, it's going to be awesome. So I just want to thank everybody who is associated with doing Palm Drive. It's going to make the city look even better when you enter it and see all these palm trees and stuff. And I'd like to also add one other thing. I'd like to thank whoever invited me to be a part of the September twenty-eighth LEED event going on at Wardman Park. It's truly an honor. And I'll be there in full uniform and raising money for the Veterans Honor Wall. So thank you all very much and I appreciate the time right now. Thank you.
Eddie, you didn't realize that you wanted you in uniform, park caretaker, because they needed someone to help clean up, so.
Oh, is that it?
Yes.
Wait, my best growing park!
That was the honor, so.
Is that what it was?
I'm joking.
Well, I have a broom and a dustpan and a rake at home.
Florence Martin, and she will be our last speaker unless anybody would like to speak. Blue card in the back. Must go to city clerk. Last call.
Mayor, council, and staff. My name is Florence Martin. I serve on the Public Safety Commission. I want to express thanks to City Attorney Jennifer Masrahi for her presentation during the Public Safety Commission meeting concerning the Brown Act as it relates to public comments during commission meetings. Thank you for the clarification.
Wow, our attorney did something really good. She got to thank you. Look, you turned her red. I saw her turn red. I wanted to get her more red. No one's looking at you, Jennifer. I mean, everybody's looking at you. It's okay. All right, thank you, Florence. With that said, I have no public comments. Would anybody like to speak in public comments that didn't have a chance? All right, we're closed public comments. We'll go to city managers' report.
Mr. Mayor, as we do every week, I'd like to have Danny report on Palm Drive. And of course, Eddie kind of beat him to it a little bit with our new palms down the center of our entryway. But that's not complete yet. You'll see much more coming there. And can you touch on the lighting, how that's changing out, and some of the other items, and when you think the paving will start? Also, Danny, some of the curb cuts and the new entryways to shopping centers and things like that, could you discuss that a little bit?
Sure. We'll start with the Palm Drive entry project. Currently, there's, the median got extended north about two hundred feet. They installed palm trees last week. There was nineteen palm trees that were installed. And there will be some brand-new uplighting and brand-new landscaping that should be completed within the next two weeks. The lighting on the median at Palm and Commune Ventura will also be upgraded. We will control the lights, different colors, different schemes and stuff throughout the whole year. So those will all be coordinated with the entry lights as well, and we plan to extend that north to all the other medians. The Palm Drive Bicycle Pedestrian, Bicycle and Pedestrian Improvement Project, the one that's going on from Commune Ventura to Tubunch, that one currently, the conduits for, for all the electrical lighting and for fiber is almost complete. They're currently installing and replacing some of the ADA driveway approaches in all the driveways leading into the, the facilities there, including the shopping centers and some of the mobile home parks as well. That one is almost done with all the concrete work, and we expect to start some of the asphalt rehab within the next two to three weeks, depending on some of the traffic control that we're implementing. So there will be additional traffic on that street, but at the end, it will look very nice. We also have the Traffic Signal Project that includes a new traffic signal at Palm Drive and Desert View, and another, another traffic signal on Pearson and Choya. That one's being awarded tonight for construction. And then, we have the Palm Drive Phase Two Project, which is very similar to the current project. It's just going to extend from Tubunch all the way to Pearson, installing brand-new traffic signals and brand-new bike lanes and so forth. That one's expected to come to council for award in November of this year. And we, we expect to continue the project moving forward with another grant project that we're also discussing tonight that was awarded by RCTC, extending the project even further north from Pearson to Eighth Street. So we do have a lot of projects going on in Palm Drive, some in construction, some in design, and some, some almost awarding for construction. Thank you.
I'm sorry, Dan, did you mention the overhead signage at all the intersections as well as the surrounds on the current lights?
So we're also upgrading all the traffic signal, street names. We're going to have reflective street names, brand-new ones, brand-new casings on all the traffic signals as well. We do get pretty banged up because of the wind, so we are getting brand-new casings, backplates on all the traffic signals, and we're getting brand-new streetlights, I mean, street name signs on each traffic signal that are backlit, LEDs, and all efficiency. So it will be completely different when we're done with it.
And then, an update on the current City Hall project, and our architect is here tonight. I've kind of put him on the spot. He may add or fill in a couple of blanks for us, but I have to say that we are extremely happy with, with the job our architect has done and continues to do. And our construction team out there, they're, they're really phenomenal, and it's, it's been a real pleasure so far. So anyway, Danny, go ahead.
Our construction's going on schedule. You can see the building on Palm and First Street. All the walls are pretty much up. We have some of the sheeting up, and we're starting some of the lath on the outside, so you'll see some, you'll see some, some stucco going in pretty soon. Then after that, they're going to move into all the landscaping, all the site work, but for now, the building is pretty much up. All the interior walls are going to get covered pretty soon, and we'll definitely move forward.
And I just wanted to add, I was able to take a tour with the city manager today, and I'm just fascinated with the progress that they're making, as quick as they're making, and what the new building's going to bring pride to our, to our workforce here in Desert Hot Springs. So I'm very thrilled about that. Can you also mention about the Economic Development Manager?
I know there's a lot of concern about the fact that, and rightfully so, that we have an animal hospital that was a real gem in our community, and now it's unoccupied and not operational. We also have the Kmart store, which in the near future will be closing. But I'd like to assure everybody that our Economic Development Manager, when he starts, some of his priorities are going to be bringing an animal hospital back to our community. The folks that own the shopping center at Kmart are very anxious to find alternatives, and we will work with them to find alternatives to the Kmart's building and fill those vacancies again. It is one of the It is, one of the reasons you see all the upgrades on Palm and will continue to see us putting money back into our city and infrastructure, is to draw businesses to our community that would not normally have taken a look at it. And since we do not border any other city along Highway 111 like the other eight cities in the valley do, we have to show that these companies that are out there that would benefit by coming to our city, that they will make money, people here will spend money, and they will be successful, as all the new businesses have been that we've brought in. So I just wanted to say real quick, Mr. Mayor, that I feel very comfortable with the fact that in the near future, those vacancies will start to fill up. And we're going to start to see some positive economic development along our main thoroughfares as well as our prime locations along the freeway. So with that being said, I also want to just take a moment and ask Roberta Cernick if she can say a couple of words about our movies in the park that are coming up.
Yes. Since our dive-in movie series is now over, we have started Free Movies in the Park. And that is starting on Saturday at 7:00 PM at Wardman Park and we will be playing the new Dumbo. And then we will also have another viewing on October 26th at 7:00 PM. And it's going to be the Addams Family for Halloween.
Awesome. Great. Do we have flyers on social media for that?
Yes. It is on Facebook on our City of Desert Hot Springs website page.
Awesome. Great.
That's all I have, sir.
And again, Chief Henson, I don't know if you were in the room at the beginning of the meeting, but I wanted to thank you for what happened yesterday and for the quick action of your staff. And if there's anything you'd like to add about that, obviously, there was a big press release yesterday, press conference yesterday on that. If, I'm sure most everybody heard about it, but if there's anything you'd like to add?
Not at this time. The investigation's still ongoing.
Well, thank you again to you and your staff for the job that they've done. All right, we'll move on to Mayor and Councilmember comments. Who'd like to go first tonight? Don't fight over it. Mr. Gardner.
I actually thought Jan had gone in first.
I thought I did.
If you guys want to arm wrestle, it's cool. It doesn't matter to me.
You want me to go first?
Go ahead. Go ahead.
I wanted to say regarding vaping that we are doing something about it. Christine, I can't pronounce her last name, Christine A. with code compliance, has already started what we call code compliance, but it's a snitch line, where you can call in and say when there's something that shouldn't be. The State Department has realized that there are more dispensaries illegal than there are legally. And so we have started, we are doing something about it and I just didn't want you to think we're doing nothing. SCAG, which is Southern California Association of Governments, you meet in LA and it's an interesting place, but anyway, they have, what else? They are against RENA, which is, help me.
Regional Housing Needs Assessment.
Right. And they're against that. And guess what HUD has put out? And it's basically because of their mythology. And it ended up that our planning commission also opposed that. So we're both on the same line. In addition to that, on the 19th, there was a housing element that occurred. I think we should have had it like at 6, but we had it at 5. But the people that did attend, it was very informative. And it's the needs assessment, constraints, housing resources, previous accomplishment, and the housing plan. And this is on our website as well. And in there, there are some stuff that developers, there are people that are new ordinance on small homes, shelters, and what have you. And all of that is in the housing element. Also, I wanted to mention for the Latinos in our area about, excuse me, I gotta get glasses. That celebrated yesterday regarding Independence Day. And it's not Cinco de Mayo. That's something different. It's, it was started on May 5, 1862, at the Battle of Poetlo. Mexican Independence Day is when Father Miguel Hidago I Costela urged Mexicans to rise up against the Spanish-born ruling class. And I just wanted to recognize that. The other thing past, Mayor Mathis asked me to attend Reverend Baylock and Elder Crystal Baylock's church. He became, it was his community dedication at the new church, a first community Baptist church. And that part of Mayor Prochem, I don't mind. But I made a mistake. When the mayor asked me to do it, he said he couldn't show. And he asked me if I would, and I did. And he asked me to submit a resolution. I forgot to ask for the resolution. It was there, but I forgot to ask for it. So I did go and I did end up saying what I thought the mayor would say. But as some people say, God is right and I did the right thing. On Sunday, this was two weeks ago, and on Sunday I went and I did present it to Pastor Baylock in front of his congregation. And that's it for me.
Mr. Gardner.
I'll get my glasses back and go from there. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's always interesting coming back after the July-August break because every single committee has two months' worth of work to deal with in a week. So it's been a busy, busy couple of weeks. Went to the public meeting on the update of our housing element that Councilmember Pie discussed a moment ago. And it, as she said, it wasn't as well-attended as I would have liked, but there were some real, there was some real good feedback. And one thing I'd like to see incorporated, if not in this update, which is overdue now, the one that's due in 2021, are provisions in our city code for tiny houses that are not part of an accessory dwelling unit. Our code doesn't provide for small houses at this time and/or multiple small homes on a lot. And it's something that we can explore as part of our RENA requirements to help with homelessness issues. Diversity DHS and the Desert Builders Association, which is a group of gay-owned and focused businesses, held a mixer at playoffs. Both Ms. Pie and Mr. Griffith and I attended. Most of the attendees had come over from other valley cities, so it was nice to get them a chance to see what Desert Hot Springs is all about. And they were all excited to come over and see what we have going on. And they said they'd never had a meeting where they had three city council people. So that was, that was a nice surprise for all of them. Went to the Palm Springs Unified School District breakfast last week along with most of my colleagues here. Desert Hot Springs High is without a doubt the best district, best school in the district on virtually every single, if not all, statistical measurements. And I'm very proud of our teachers and our students here. We had a great meeting and we got to see some tremendous statistics. And DHS High is right at the top of that. And it's something that the community really doesn't talk a lot about, and I think that we should. Also, had a chance to meet with the young man who is the student representative from DHS High on the school board, Brandon Ullin, a very impressive junior here at DHS High School. Attended the Coachella Valley Mountains Conservancy, which is one of my new committee assignments. CBMCC is joining, or is rather forming a joint powers authority with the Desert Recreation District. And the focus will be on jointly improving our hiking trails and outdoor recreation opportunities, some trail improvement, signage, other recreation activities on the protected lands that CBMCC owns or manages. The Conservancy also made several grant projects for the living desert and for areas managed by the Friends of the Desert Mountains. And then the next day, attended the Coachella Valley Conservation Commission, not to be confused with the Coachella Valley Mountains Conservancy, where we approved quite a few additional purchases in the Willow Hole area here east of DHS, gradually filling in the checkerboard of the remaining private land and preserving more open space as part of the multi-species habitat program and for recreation. The eventual plan is for some additional trails out there in Willow Hole with signage for the Ancient American Campground that was in the area. We also discussed updating the valley-wide trail map, both electronically and smartphone app and the paper version. Hiking is on pace to surpass golf as the major outdoor recreation activity in the desert. And DHS is well-positioned to draw a lot of visitors with our trails here and the immediate surrounding effort. We'll be doing a lot with them and in conjunction with the Greater Palm Springs Convention Visitors Bureau. And if all goes as planned, I expect in the next few years to see Desert Hot Springs become a major destination for more outdoor recreation. And lastly, attended the board meeting of the Coachella Valley Mosquito and Vector Control District. District is still tracking mosquitoes in the northeast part of our city. They're ones that don't really carry diseases like West Nile or St. Louis encephalitis, but they are pests. We've not had them in DHS in the past and it's something the district is actively working on right now to eradicate them. If you live in the northeast part of the city, you've seen the trucks out there. You may even had a visit from one of the technicians looking to find standing water and things. They'll be working on spot treatments for now. We don't plan any areola ground spraying at this time. We will have plenty of notification if we do have to go that route. But everybody should take precautions and make sure that there's no breeding ground standing water such in our yards, particularly in that northeast quadrant of the city. And that's all I've got.
Thank you, Mr. Betts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Stopped in at our Kmart, which you all know is closing. And, you know, everybody knows I've been a real big supporter of that store. They've served us really, really well. It was, of course, very sad to see the employees that are there that are, you know, not just losing their job, but, you know, the store that they've been at for a long time. If you get a chance, stop in and thank them. They've served this community really, really well. If you're looking for some deals, they're there, but I think stuff's going pretty quick now. It's not going to be long before that closes up. Obviously sad, but if you look back, you remember when Big O closed and everybody said, oh, there's going to be an empty building. Big O's gone. Well, Desert Tire went in, took over. Somebody come in and pick up this property that, you know, there's been some talk on the social media that, oh, it's going to stay as a boarded-up, empty building. And that's not going to happen. That property's too valuable. Somebody will be moving in there soon. There'll be a new store and we'll miss Kmart and all that it's provided this community over the years, but at least there'll be something else there. And then Mr. City Manager, on the, the City Attorney's report, I wanted to make sure that this was out there. The suit that was holding up, the lawsuit that was holding up Grocery Outlet is settled, correct? And that was holding up Grocery Outlet? And now it's not held up any longer, right?
As far as I know, legally, from my end, it is, well, my end. It is not.
Okay, so the, so the, so the next question becomes, is staff going to take forever to approve these plans?
They're already approved, aren't they?
And plan check?
I'm not sure how to answer that. We're seven days into the 10-day.
Well, I have a segue to you being able to say, no, we're doing a great job.
We're seven days into the 10-day plan check with them right now. So in three days, they have to have the plans back to us so we can go over those with Grocery Outlet. And we are anxious, I'm sorry?
We have approved building plans for the Grocery Outlet.
Oh, okay. So they're approved building plans, so they're going to get permits now.
Okay. So everything, that was a long way around of saying, everything's moving really quick. I was trying to give you guys a opening to say, yeah, we're doing a great job here, but I'll just say.
That was the strangest opening I've ever seen in my life.
All right, well, you know what I'm going to say.
Thank you. I really do appreciate that. I'll try to get those social cues from the.
We'll rehearse them ahead of time, okay?
Chuck's the next police chief. It's either black or white. You can't give them these in-betweens.
All right, well, we're going to rehearse these in ahead of time anyhow, so. All right, well, now you know it's not rehearsed. Okay, so that's that. We're going to see something good come out of there, out of the Kmart. We got Grocery Outlet going. Stuff's going to happen here. It's not just going to sit dead like you, you get some naysayers out there on social media want to say. We had some concern over crossing guard, a crossing, a school crossing at Cabot Yerkes Elementary. People driving in the city don't seem to respect the obvious crossing, crosswalk that's been put in for the kids to get safely to school. And there's some parents complaining that they're having to go out there and play traffic cop and then talk to City Manager today. And there is a process where we can do something about that. Is that something that has to come back to the City Council or is that something we're going to move on and get fixed?
Well, the Chief of Police has already been working with the principal over at Cabot Yerkes on this. And he has called me yesterday and asked Human Resources to provide him the numbers for adding a crossing guard there. And we do have a list of crossing guards that are wanting to go to work, so we're working on that right now.
Okay, so, you know, it comes up on social media and it's just, I guess, I missed that one. I didn't do a very good segue on that one either, I guess. But the point is that, I should just say it instead of mess around like this, but, you know, stuff's coming up on social media and it's already in the works. So there's another one that, you know, when I checked on this, it says, no, no, we've got this one going. Somebody was down at the Public Safety Commission meeting saying they wanted a stop sign or signals at Pearson and Choya. And if you look at our agenda tonight, that's already in the works. So there's a lot of stuff going along that I think the staff is paying attention to and picking up on pretty quickly. Palm Drive, we need better patrols, but understand that's in the works. A lot of people complaining about that. You'll get people who sit there and say, why aren't you picking this stuff up? Somebody called and complained and said, hey, there's some trash sitting out here. And it was kind of an obscure area. Some debris got dumped. So the conversation went, well, pick up the phone and call them. And they said, well, why should I have to call them? I said, well, because we set up a hotline for you to call. We can't possibly keep track of every area of the city. This is a group effort and we're doing the best we can. We got a vehicle out there five days a week picking this stuff up, making this place look a lot better. But if you see something, call it in. It'll get picked up. So they said, okay, I'll do it. And then they called back later, said, wow, that's amazing, and got picked up. So that's working. Before I forget, there's a meeting tomorrow in this room on Sunline Transit Agency, specifically Line 15 and service in and out of Desert Hot Springs. If you have any concerns, questions, this is a meeting that's set up to ask you to come forward and say, hey, what do you want to see? What's, what would you like to see different? What's working, what's not working in the bus late too often, anything like that? Come on down to the meeting tomorrow at 6:00 PM right here in this room at DeCarlo May. We'll also have some updates and some things to let you know what Sunline's working on to provide different and better service. Couple other things. Attended meetings at Airport Land Use Commission, Southern California Association of Governments twice, which was on RENA, and then Desert Valley Builders Association also had a meeting on RENA. It's the meeting de jour is RENA these days. So anyhow, very complicated subject, but it seems to be winding through the process. And that's it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Griffith?
I attended the Historical Society meeting about two weeks ago and that's when I found out about the $3 membership for 2020. And I suggested that they come announce that to everybody. I think it's a great opportunity for everybody to get involved and at least try it for $3. You can't go wrong. I think this group does wonderful things for us and it's very informative. Also did attend the DHS Housing Element Workshop. That was very, very interesting. The Palm Springs Unified School District Legislative Breakfast, I went there. And again, I will follow up what Mr. Gardner said, which is that Desert Hot Springs High School has the best results of any high school in this school district. Also attended the Coachella Valley Association of Governments Energy and Environmental Resources Workshop and found out that one of the things that the state is now doing is requiring as part of our general plan, adaptation measures to anticipate the issues with climate change. So that was very informative and interesting. And that is pretty much my week.
Well, that was fast. All right, I'll finish up with a couple of meetings that I attended over the last two weeks. The City Manager and I were invited to a meeting with some residents and TerraGen, which is the project manager for the windmill project in our city limits. They're currently just out of approval to put up four windmills and take down the 60 old ones that are up there. And there were some residents that wanted some answers to questions and they were given given that opportunity in a meeting with us and the folks for TerraGen. So I wanted to thank them for coming out and answering those questions for those residents. The same day, I was asked to speak at Rotary and give a short version of State of the City. I did that. That same week and Friday, the next day, the Women's Council of Realtors each year invites all the mayors from all the cities. Six mayors showed up at the eight cities, and we're given 15 minutes each to talk about our cities to the Women's Council of Realtors. So it was an honor to be able to do that. That night, Desert Hot Springs High School football game, I had Community Night, and I was asked to flip the coin. It's always an honor to do that at our football games and see the spirit that the Principal Cota, who's the newest principal to Desert Hot Springs High School or to the area, she took over as principal last year, Desert Hot Springs High School, has put this in effect, this Community Night, so that you can bring people out in the community to be able to enjoy football. On the following Monday, Sea Bag Transportation met. Couple of things on the agenda that were really important to the city of Desert Hot Springs. One, there is a bicycle and safety planning that's going on. There's three companies that have been hired to take on the region here and come up with these, this plan. The discussion for a while has been, is there uniformity to the bicycle and pedestrian plan across the Coachella Valley? And it's not always uniform because it comes back to the local cities when we do the road striping, putting in the bike lanes, the pedestrian walkways. And it's talked about the region that if we, we aren't really connected, we are connected to Palm Springs and Cathedral City, but when it comes to bicycling and pedestrian, it's not just a walk across the street. But there are cities like Cathedral City and Palm Springs that back up to each other, and people would bike right into the city not knowing it, but the lanes could change striped-wise for bicyclists. Sidewalks could change for pedestrian safety, those type of things. So coming up with a plan that would be more uniform to the Coachella Valley and suggestions on regional, on the region, looking at the same plan for each city, is something that we're gonna come up with. The other thing that was very important to us is this has been on my agenda for many years. Mr. Gardner had recently taken it on, is the blow sand at Indian Canyon being shut down. We have flooding that happens here, and recently had what they're calling the Hundred Year Flood come through on Valentine's Day of this year. That caused most of the sand that was compacted to become very silty and become easily blown onto the streets, which closes the streets because it just, you can't travel on them anymore. And the main street that's closed is Indian Canyon, this being the fastest way to the only trauma center here in the Coachella Valley for the, most of the northern end of the Coachella Valley, such as our cities, North Indio, Bermuda Dunes, Thousand Palms, and some other cities that have to travel in for the trauma center. This is the focus that we've taken, and because of this, we've asked Sea Bag to do a study. The county's gonna do a study on multiple areas within Desert Hot Springs, Palm Springs, and Cathedral City that have these blow sand events. And we're gonna come up with a plan to hopefully keep Indian Canyon open in the future. It is not feasible, well, let me go back one step. There's a transportation plan that is developed, I believe, every year or every two years by the Coachella Valley Association of Governments, and it ranks every major arterial in our valley and ranks the need for road repairs, bridges, culverts, those types of things. The Indian Canyon from I-10 into Palm Springs and the Ginatri from I-10 into Palm Springs each are slated for a $250 million bridge each. That's a half a billion dollars. If we can find alternatives to these transportations into Palm Springs, it's a regional issue. If we can find alternatives to these issues and not have to build a billion dollars, and these projects rank very high, that could put obviously a half a billion dollars of projects back into the queue of regional arterias that need to be repaired. So with that, the county's taking the lead. They're going to do a study. It's only gonna cost, I believe, $300,000 to do the study and come up with better solutions over time for travel into Palm Springs and through Desert Hot Springs. I missed the Palm Springs Unified School District Legislative Breakfast, not realizing that I had a very important issue on the Riverside County Transportation Commission meeting that I had to be there for a vote. So I'd had to leave the valley early that morning. I would only got about 10 minutes into the meeting and had to leave. So thank you to the council members that did attend that. I apologize to Palm Springs Unified School District for not being able to attend. But I did attend Riverside County Transportation. There was two issues on there. One, the 60, State Route 60 from Beaumont to Moreno Valley. If you haven't heard my spiel each meeting, be very careful when you're traveling through there. Most recently, there was an accident which killed two innocent people that were traveling because of somebody doing, driving too fast. It is down to one lane on, I believe, the westbound lanes. They still have two lanes in the eastbound for the next six months, and then it's gonna, it's gonna flip. It's still got over a year worth of project there. It is, if you can go around, I attended 215 into Riverside, that is a better access. But if you are gonna travel through the 60, which is open most of the time, there are gonna be some closures coming up. But if you do travel to 60, be very aware that there's multiple CHP officers that are on the project, and they will pull you over if you're doing too fast. It's 55 through that construction zone. The target for the first closure will be in October. They're waiting for Caltrans approval. It'll be the second or third weekend, I believe. It'll be a, I believe, a 48-hour closure. It'll close early Saturday morning, not open again until early Monday morning. That is due to safety. They'll be taking down, they have to move 2 million cubic feet of dirt to make these new truck climbing lanes through the 60. And because of that, they're going to be working on a very, I don't know what you call it, but it's a very large hill, that they're gonna be taking down a lot of dirt, and it could put dirt, rocks, and other things onto the roadway while they're taking this hill down. And so it's, they need to close the roadway. And there'll be one more closure possibly before the first of the year, but there's definitely one coming in October. So if you haven't, you're on social media, you can actually join or like the Facebook, I think it's State Route 60, you can type that in. It'll give you alerts. You can also be part of Riverside County Transportation, RCTC, on Facebook, Instagram. There's also alerts through them on the traveling, when you're traveling through that area. I attended the Desert Valley Builders Association luncheon with Mr. Betts. Again, I was very interested in hearing the RENA discussion. This came from SCAG, Southern California Association of Governments, which is the agency that is giving the numbers for the region. So this region is basically Los Angeles County, is it Orange County, Riverside County, and San Bernardino, San Luis Obispo?
Los Angeles.
Ventura. Yeah. Where San Diego County has their own cog. It's astonishing. The numbers that came out for the state is 1.3 million houses need to be built over, what is it?
For our region.
For, no, 1.3 for...
For SCAG region.
For that SCAG region? Oh, well, never mind. And then, was it Riverside County has over 300,000 of that or something like that?
It's getting divided up now.
Yeah, so the division is just terrible, and then it goes back onto the local cities. It goes from the region to the counties to the cities, and there's been a lot of good work done by past Councilmember McKee and the current Councilmember Betts on this, these issues at the region to make it more fair and equitable for the cities. I think at one point, we were responsible for 5,000 units, which is ridiculous because we could not use rehab units or units that were, it was just, the numbers that had to be made was just impossible for our city to come up with. So hopefully those numbers will go down with all the good work that's been done there, and we'll see what happens. But it was just astonishing to see how many numbers, how many housing units they really think they're gonna build in California over a certain period of time. So that's all I have. With that, we're gonna move on to our first agenda item. This'll be a public hearing, and this is gonna be item number four. This is creating special tax area 45. This is for Watermark Homes LLC for assessors, parcel numbers, APN 661-550-011 through 661-550-019 and 661-551-001 through 661-551-007. Located north of Mission Lakes Boulevard and east of Little Morongo Road to the Desert Hot Springs Public Safety Tax Area. And this is gonna be Mr. Buckheim, and I'm assuming Mr. Betts is gonna chime in because he has a...
Yeah, in addition to being close to those locations you mentioned, it's also very close to my residence. I'm within 500 feet of this special tax area, so I have a proximity recusal, meaning interest due to the proximity of my property to this property, so I'm gonna recuse.
Thank you. Once he's off the dais, Mr. Buckham, you can begin. That says Buck Ham, it's Buckheim. Is that better?
Yes, it's Buckheim.
I've been bad on names today.
It's all right. Something I've grown up with. Many variations. So this is actually the public hearing for the adoption of the resolution creating the special zone adopted on July 2nd, 2019. These Watermark Homes consist of 16 residential lots on Rolling Hills Drive, north of Mission Lakes Boulevard. These new homes are gonna be requiring additional, you know, police and safety fire services. So the creation of this zone will put these parcels on the public safety tax roll to help with the additional services needed for when these homes are built and occupied. So we also have representatives from Webb Municipal Finance here for any additional questions.
We'll entertain any questions of the staff. Mr. Gardner?
Just one, Jeffrey. We're doing this for the Watermark part, but there are five other lots in there that were purchased by another developer. Is, are we gonna have to do this all over again when they come, or can we just loop that whole area into one?
No, we are actually gonna have to do this over again when they come in. So it's each actual, we do it when, actually every zone set up when it's starting on being developed instead of just the vacant property.
Oh, okay.
So and then each developer is actually, or applicant is actually responsible for paying for the costs of the, of this election or the, putting it on the parcel, putting it on the tax rolls.
All right, thank you.
I have nobody else in the queue. I'll open the public hearing at this time and take any public testimony. Would anybody like to speak on this item? I see no one standing. This'll be final call. I will close the public hearing at this time. Any more discussion from the City Council? I see none. I'm gonna hold the election and canvass the election. Mr. City Clerk?
The property owner has voted in favor.
All right, since you voted in favor, we can move on to a motion to adopt the ordinance establishing a special public safety tax area for Zone 45. Would anybody like to make that motion? So moved, Mr. Gardner? There is a second by Mr. Griffith. Any more discussion? I see none. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. Wait for Mr. Betts to rejoin us. We'll move on to the administrative calendar. Item number five is the approval of the Mission Springs Water District initiating formation of Assessment District Number 18 of the Mission Springs Water District. This'll be our Public Works Director, Mr. Porres.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Mission Springs Water District is commencing the process for an assessment district or forming an assessment district. This is Assessment District Number 18. It comprises of seven zones. Six of those zones are within the city of Desert Hot Springs. What it'll do is if, once we move through the process where it'll end up at the residents of each or the property owner of each parcel will then vote to create the assessment district, which will fund the construction of the sewers. So those parcels within those zones will then receive sewers and switch from septic down to sewer. It's a long process, but it's one of the initiation processes that's required in order to move forward for the next processes. We have Shane Spicer and John Siller, two consultants from Mission Springs Water District, that will be able to answer more detailed questions about the process and any other questions you might have.
Thank you for the report. Do we have any public comments on this item before we get into questioning by council? I see nobody coming forth. Last call. Close public comments. At this time, I'll open up the council member comments. I have nobody in the queue. I'll entertain a motion. There is a motion by Mr. Gardner, a second by Ms. Pye. Is there any more discussion? Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
All right, move on to the next item. This is the item number six. This is low voltage system for the new city hall project. This'll be our Deputy City Manager, Luke Rainey.
And Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Before we go too far along on this one, our business is located within 500 feet of this project, so I have a proximity recusal. I had a long discussion with the city attorney on this one, and even though this is starting to get to interior of the building, I'm advised that I should recuse, so I will.
Okay. As soon as Mr. Betts is off the dais, Mr. Rainey, you can move on with your report.
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Protem, council members. So the item before you is discussing low voltage systems in the new city hall project. I have a quick PowerPoint I'm gonna go over to try to break down the different portions of the proposed contract, and we also have representation from the company that the staff is recommending for the contract. And I'll have them come up and introduce themselves after I'm done with this portion. So when we're talking about low voltage systems in city hall, they really fall into three main categories. One is the wiring of the city hall, the second are AV needs, and the third is security. So when we're talking about wiring, what I have here on the right in the presentation is a map from a bird's eye view of the city hall design. All those little triangles you see are endpoints, and that's where you plug things in like computers and printers and televisions and really anything that needs to communicate. And those need to run via wires back to centralized locations, which we have in the upper right and the lower left. So this needs to be done regardless of any of the other low voltage proposal points that we're bringing up here because it's a new building. This is another view, this is from the view of the devices themselves. Each of the devices have to be connected to their proper informational hubs, and they need to be designed in a way so that they interact well, but that they don't conflict with one another, and that is a lot easier said than done. The audiovisual needs are things that, like monitors, microphones, touchscreens, televisions, and a large portion of our AV proposal is dedicated to the newly designed city hall chambers. And there's a rough design there on the right. Of course, when we're done, it's going to look more like this, and they can talk more about that when they come up and introduce themselves. The last portion is security, and there's really two main portions of security. You can think of it as internal and external. We've got, right here, there is a map of the entire city hall site, and you see a bunch of numbers with the sort of triangular shapes, and those are surveillance cameras, and the shapes represent their point of view. But we also have internal security as well. We are, as part of the proposal, proposing internal security controls that will allow us to lock down certain portions of city hall as the need arises. So because we have all this great design and implementation going on with this exciting new building, we have a window of opportunity to integrate a lot of state-of-the-art solutions. So those three primary objectives I just went over on the left, what we did was last spring, staff started to meet with local companies, two separate vendors, and talk about what our vision was for the new city hall, what kind of things we wanted to see. And they helped us develop a scope of services. In addition to those objectives, we also wanted to take into account two, what I would call secondary objectives. One is that we will have an emergency operating, operations center operating out of the city hall chambers when the time is needed, and we're able to utilize this opportunity to bring forth a state-of-the-art EOC. And then the second thing that I have underlined there is a maintenance plan. In my decades of experience, one of the pitfalls of technology is spending a lot of money on bright, shiny new objects and then not taking into account how much it will cost to truly run those over the years. These are complex living systems, and you can't just leave them because they will slowly die a slow death. So in order to make sure we don't go in that direction, we asked as part of our RFP for the, anybody submitting proposals to submit a maintenance plan as well. So those objectives, when they are translated into what do they look like? When you're looking at the wiring, we're talking about 35,000 feet of data wiring, 1,000 feet of high-speed fiber, over 100 data ports, those little triangles I talked about in that first picture. I talked about in that first picture. When we're talking about audiovisual, again, that's really focused on the council chambers, but there's also elements that will be throughout city hall. We have, of course, the large screen TVs and displays that we'll use for council meetings, and the mics and the wireless mics. We've also got four digital whiteboards as part of the proposal. Those are... there's one in the city manager's office right now that we all utilize to all keep on the same page about what's coming up on the agenda. And we are also integrating council chamber cameras for recording meetings. And then when we go to security, we have the surveillance cameras on the outside. Those require video distribution system, and we also have security controls as part of the proposal that will control access to employee parking, as well as certain areas of city hall. So, we got two RFP responses, and they came within just about, what, five thousand dollars of each other. We asked them to break the costs down into design, equipment, and construction so that we could do more of an apples-to-apples comparison, and based on the information we received from both of the proposals, we're able to show that the total without maintenance is about six hundred and twenty-four thousand for our first ranking company, which is AMS Connect. So, this is a company organization chart that AMS Connect gave us, and they've got thirty-nine full-time employees, including several staff members that are technicians, project managers, and of course, administration and so forth. So, they received the highest rating. We had a group of staff members score the proposals, and the staff rated them highest because they really demonstrated through their proposal that they really understood our vision and how they could help us achieve that vision. And we also were impressed by their expertise and references as well. They also provided the most cost-effective proposal, and what I like about them is they have a local presence. Back to our idea about really making sure that we can partner with a company that can maintain this solution, as well as just put it in. A local presence is really a key factor that we feel excited about, and they also have experience with municipal environments as well. So, their proposal total, which I'm actually in this number, including the two-years maintenance, is six hundred and fifty-three thousand ninety-four dollars. Staff is also asking for the council to consider a five percent contingency, just to allow us a little flexibility if we run into situations where we might want to add a TV here, or perhaps upgrade a certain type of technology based on the needs that are identified as we are building out the city hall. And as far as funding goes, as part of the entire city hall project, early on, we designated a million dollars specifically for what we called IT. This we are considering as part of IT. It is not using up the entire million dollars, but there is... are other things that we will be doing. We will be moving a lot of the IT equipment that we purchased about two years ago when we upgraded the city's infrastructure. We will be moving that to the new city hall, and we will also be adding a few minor additional things that are just necessary because we'll be operating out of two locations now. So, with that, the staff recommendation is to award the bid and authorize the city manager to execute a... an agreement with AMS Connect to provide low voltage maintenance systems for the new city hall project, an amount of six hundred and fifty-three thousand ninety-three dollars and fifty-six cents, plus a five percent contingency for a total not to exceed six hundred eighty-five thousand seven hundred forty-eight twenty-four cents. So, with that, I'd like to invite... we have two staff members from AMS Connect. We have Tustin Larson, who is a project manager, and Paul Tally, who is a systems and programs designer. Welcome.
Thank you. Honorable Mayor, members of the council, Mr. City Manager and staff, my name is Tustin Larson at AMS Connect. This is my colleague, Paul Tally, and we're here to answer any questions that you may have about our proposed system for your new city hall.
Great. Welcome and thank you. Gerald, can I get the screen back? Is anybody that has any questions for...
I have questions.
Okay. Did you wanna wait to watch the public comment, or did you wanna do it now? Gentlemen, I'll have you come back up in just a minute. As soon as I have questions, I'm gonna open up the public comment. Would anybody like to speak on this item? I see nobody coming forth. Last call. I'll close public comments. I'll open it up to questions. Ms. Pye?
On page sixty-nine, item C.
I think your mic's on.
Oh, sorry.
Page sixty-nine, item C.
Yes. So, you're talking about the workers' compensation insurance, correct?
Correct.
So, if you look, there are bullet points there, and we will strike those out before we execute the contract. Those are meant actually to guide the staff and who's ever working on the contract as to sort of an either-or situation, but AMS Connect, obviously, having thirty-nine staff members, will have workers' compensation insurance, and we'll verify that as part of the contract.
Seventy? Security? I need to know what those figures are.
Okay. So, on... yeah, this is something that I should've caught, but didn't. We... as part of the RFP, we provide a template for the contract, and that's what you're looking at there. Let me direct you to the actual contract itself, which came after that, and the amount is going to be on...
I think it's here. I don't think we have that.
On packet page one sixty-seven.
One sixty-seven.
Do you wanna know the amount? On that... on packet page one sixty-seven, do you have the amount for her?
Yes. That's six... on packet page one sixty-seven, it states six hundred eighty-five thousand seven hundred forty-eight dollars and twenty-four cents.
Okay. Okay.
And I'll be more careful about leaving those drafts out.
Well, you know I'm reading.
Yeah. I do know.
Okay, I'm done.
Any of us have any questions? The contractor's here. It's timed, yeah.
All right. One... IT stuff is not only pricey, but it has a shelf life that's relatively short. We're gonna get a brand-new, wonderful, state-of-the-art system that will really make our workload to our staff a lot easier and make information flow and make our citizens much more aware of what's going on. Rough idea of the life cycle of the stuff that we're getting, and are we gonna be upgrading it again, or having to upgrade it in two years, three years, five years?
That's a great question, Councilmember Gardner. So, typically, for computer systems, the lifespan is somewhere between six and seven years, typically. IT systems range anywhere in between three to that amount of time, and it really just takes into... it takes into account the environment that it's in, the physical environment that it's in, making sure that any updates are completed, firmware, software, those types of things, making sure that those systems are maintained, which is why we, you know, we put in a very comprehensive maintenance plan to be here on-site at the new city hall location by week... week... excuse me, monthly, bi-monthly, quarterly, and annually, making sure that those systems are taken care of. And then also bi-weekly, where we're gonna be checking in remotely to make sure that any of the systems that we've installed have the correct firmware, software updates, things of those sort. So, I can tell you that there is no guarantee as far as amount of time goes, but I can tell you typically, for these types of systems, it's gonna be somewhere between, say, four years and seven years.
Great. I mean, that is a key...
If I could interject, also, a large portion of this... of the procurement and the installation is going to be the data wiring, and that has quite a long life. There's... there are offices here that were wired before I got to the city twelve years ago that I've never had to touch. So, that's a large portion of this as well.
Sure. Yeah, and to expand on that, too, the wiring that we're installing is... I hate to use the term "future-proofing" because it's such a buzzword, but it will... as network speeds increase, the wiring will not have to be updated until you get to somewhere far down the road where anything that comes out will be far exceeded by the current capabilities of technology. But we're installing wiring that is going to be... that's gonna give you ten, fifteen, twenty years of service with that fail.
Somebody who has old Cat Five wire still laying around, I know what you're talking about. So... but, no, I... having the maintenance piece of this, I think, is a key, and I'm glad we have that in there, because that is not the kind of expertise... I know you're a smart guy, but that's not your bailiwick, and I'm glad we have experts on staff and paid to do that. And I think that's a big key to why this bid is so attractive, so I'm happy to see that. So, thank you both.
And I'll just make some comments. Our... looking at the city council chambers, one of the gripes that we've heard from council members in the past and current council members is that we're really tied up here. We really like each other a lot, but it's really tied up here. So, when this was built, it wasn't built to really make you comfortable up here. Maybe that's what... we're not supposed to be as comfortable up here. But the one problem is, is that we have one monitor, and we have to ask the city clerk to constantly change it when presentations, and so one of the upgrades will be two monitors per council seat, so that you can look at the presentations on one and be able to know what's on the queue and in your agenda on the other, which will make it a lot more efficient for us. But walking through the project today, and the city manager speaking to me, will have multiple upgrades technology-wise for you, the public. So, when you come in, you'll be able to check in electronically, you'll be able to get a number, you'll know where you're at in the queue, you'll know when you're gonna be served, and be able to see what's going on. For those of you attending our meetings and not comfortable, wanna walk around, there'll be TVs outside the council chambers so that you can see what's going on during the council meetings. So, the technologist, as he was speaking, if you come to our office right now, you can actually see the agenda that's going to be posted for the next two meetings. You can see what items have been approved, and those are things that will constantly be able to keep people efficient within our city hall. And one of the other things that impressed me was if there's multiple... if there's a staff meeting going on and multiple presentations have to be made, that staff member doesn't have to wait till they're... have to give their presentation. They can watch on the live action and what's going on in that meeting and wait for that to happen. So, I don't wanna, you know, get everybody excited, "Jex is not here," and the technology by... within six months will be gone, and we'll be moving on to something... no, I'm joking. But this is... this is the future technology and things that are happening. So, I'm thrilled with it. Obviously, there's a lot of wiring that has to go on to make all this happen, and that's a large portion of this cost. So, thank you for what you guys are doing. I have no other questions for you. Does anybody have any more questions? Robert, you speak too much. Thank you very much. Any more questions for staff? At this time, we entertain a motion. There is a motion.
I'll second.
And there is a second. If there's no more discussion, please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. You don't have to hang out the rest of the night if you don't want to, so...
We can maybe put them to work right now?
Yeah, we could put them to work right now. Waiting for Mr. Betts to come back on the dais and move on. He's on the dais. Number seven is to award the construction contract for the installation of traffic signals at Pearson Boulevard at Choya Drive and Palm Drive at Desert View Avenue, city project number two thousand nineteen dash ten. This will be our Public Works Director, Mr. Porres.
Members of the council, in 2017, SEVAG, Coachella Valley Association of Governments, approved funding, ten million dollars in project funding for safety projects within the Coachella Valley. That funding included two-point-two-four-seven million funded for the city of Desert Hot Springs Palm Drive Street Lighting and Signals Project, which included the installation of twenty-four new streetlights on Palm Drive between Two Bunch and Vona Vista. It included traffic signal synchronization elements from Palm... on Palm Drive from Camina Ventura to Pearson Boulevard. It included the completion of traffic signal warrants at five intersections, which were Palm Drive and Vona Vista. That one was not warranted. Palm Drive Desert View, which was warranted. Palm Drive Flora, which was not warranted. Palm Drive Camina Ventura and Pearson Boulevard and Choya, which were warranted. In an effort to address immediate safety concerns and complete the project in a timely manner, we separated the project into three phases. The first phase was the completion of the traffic signal at Palm and Camina Ventura. That project has been completed. The second phase was the completion of the traffic signals at Palm Drive and Desert View and the traffic signal at Pearson Boulevard and Choya. That is what we are awarding the construction tonight. And then the third phase was a Palm Drive Street Light Project, which will be awarded in November, which is the installation of streetlights from... on Palm Drive from Two Bunch to Pearson Boulevard. On August 11th, 2019, the request for bid proposals for Phase Two, which is the installation of traffic signals, was released. The notice inviting bids was posted on the city's website and Planet Reaper Graphics, which is a public clearinghouse for public bid solicitations. The RFP was released for twenty-nine days, and on September 9th, the city received three bids. Received bids from Eleknor Belkor Electric, from DBX Incorporated, and from Calpromax. Staff reviewed the bids and verified all submitted, and determined the lowest responsible bidder to be Eleknor Belkor Electric, with a total bid amount of five hundred eighty-two thousand six hundred and fifty dollars and zero cents. The city has worked with Eleknor Belkor and has good reputation. Staff is recommending that council award the construction contract agreement to the lowest responsible bidder, Eleknor Belkor Electric, and authorize the city manager to execute the agreement by and between Eleknor Belkor Electric and the city of Desert Hot Springs for the installation of traffic signals at Pearson and Choya and Palm Drive and Desert View, city project number two thousand nineteen dash ten, in the amount of five hundred eighty-two thousand six hundred and fifty dollars and zero cents, and also approve a contingency amount of eighty-seven thousand three hundred ninety-seven dollars and fifty cents, which is fifteen percent, as-needed inspection services of sixty thousand dollars and zero cents, as-needed material testing and equipment testing of fifteen thousand dollars and zero cents, which brings the total project budget to seven hundred forty-five thousand forty-seven dollars and fifty cents. That concludes my staff report. I'm glad to answer any questions.
Do I have any public comments on this item? I see nobody coming forth. Anyone? Last call. I'll close public comments. I'd just like to say, you know, this is... it takes a long time to get these projects done, but when they finally get there and you've riled up every... the bidding and the funding, and it's exciting. It's exciting to see the safety that's coming to our community. We set priorities as a council about three years, almost four years ago, on pedestrian and bicycle safety in our community, and we're seeing this all come to fruition years later. And so, I'm excited about this project to get it up and running and be more safe in our community. This is gonna put more lighting out there. It's gonna slow traffic down. It's going to make it safer out there. Will it make it, you know, foolproof? No. People are still gonna make mistakes and walk across the street where they shouldn't, but for the most part, it's gonna give opportunity for people to slow down and drive safer. Mr. Betts?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Now, these are controlled intersections with crosswalks, crossing signals and everything, right?
Yes.
Could we get page... packet page one eighty-six up on the screen?
With our new technology at city hall... The new city hall, it'll be a lot easier, won't it?
Did you vote on something on that? While we're waiting for that, I'm looking at these drawings of the intersections, and it appears that the... I thought intersections were square. These look to be quite askew with the dimensions all off. Were we not able to get that up? There we go. Is that one eighty-six? Oh, it's not showing all of it for some reason. Something's blocked off on there. All right, we can see the one ramp that shows it very well. Those aren't right angles.
Correct.
The streets have not been put in properly. What happened? What caused that? I mean, one side of the street didn't coordinate with the other, or what's going on here?
Right. The north side and the south side of the streets are not the exact same width, so the exact point from intersection from the two ADA ramps do not match exactly. That's why they're skewed. So, a pedestrian would walk out of the ADA ramp and walk directly into another ADA ramp, and they line up perfectly. In a perfect world, yeah, they would be exactly ninety degrees, but since they both don't line up, then we have to skew them to make sure that pedestrians do walk directly in front of the crosswalk.
Okay, so the Virgo in me asks, can we fix that?
We would have to realign the ADA ramp on either the northwest or north-south to either intrude into the street or widen the street so it can match exactly.
Okay. Well, we had the same issue on the other intersection, but to a lesser degree. There's... you can't see it. It's only partially showing on the screen, but that one seems to me to be really askew, and something has not gone right. This looks like that intersection down there on Two Bunch Palms and... was it west, maybe, where nothing matches up? It's all, you know, it just... I don't know. Who's not designing these streets when we're putting them in to match? And I know it predates you, but... And I know it predates you, but is it a problem to have?
It's common, just because there, again, there's projects that happened years ago, and then a new project comes in, and our wide section is changed throughout the years, so it's not exactly the same. It's not a safety problem, if you're asking that. No, it's not a safety problem. We do see it constantly around various intersections.
So I guess the thing is, is correcting it's a huge expense at this point?
It's going to be a larger expense, yeah. We would have to either widen it or intrude into the extra driving lane. I'm not sure which one would be cheaper. Not sure.
Okay. All right, well, I won't vote against it over that, but I'd sure like to see that stuff get fixed. All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Gardner?
Again, I just wanted to reiterate how pleased I am to finally see this, too. I live fairly close to the Choya and Pearson one, and regularly walk across that intersection, and it's one where you take your life in your hands. And having a stop sign there, or a stoplight and an actual timed crosswalk will be great. It's right up against the high school. It's going to save those kids, it's going to save a lot of people, it's going to be great, slow down people as well. Same with the one at Desert View and Palm. That's going to slow a lot of that traffic, because it just whizzes down from Pearson and the next stop sign isn't, or stoplight isn't until you get to Hacienda, and people just start roaring down past there, especially late at night. So this should, this should calm a lot of that traffic down there. I can tell you, looking at the Pearson and Choya one, it is a little askew. A big chunk of that is because the four corners were all built at different times and to different specs, and so they're not going to line up perfect, because it wasn't designed to line up perfect. But my ADD looks at it at this angle and goes, oh, but once you're down there on the ground, it's not. You're not going to notice it, and it'll be a straight shot, straight off the ADA ramp, straight over to the other ADA ramp. So I'm not concerned about that, but because of all four of those intersect, all four of those corners were built at different times by different builders and different years, with no design for a stop sign or a stoplight there, that's going to not quite always match up. But I'm excited to see this. Do you have a timeline on when construction will start with this one and be completed?
We do have a timeline. Let me just bring it up. We plan on starting construction in October. Now, we had some delays on the traffic signal poles at the last intersection, which took us about 11 months to complete the entire project. We hope that we don't have the same delays, but we are honestly on the mercy of the two biggest companies in the entire country, pretty much, that produce them. So we'd have a better outcome and a better time of when it will be. The worst-case scenario is 11 months. We are, we do have a 120-day contract that gets extended based on whatever the actual manufacturer is going to take at the time we place the order. So we want to place the order as soon as possible, so we don't have to have any delays. So I'll be able to give you a better update in the next meeting.
So we'll give you, and maybe you can, maybe you can call Amazon in the morning if we make a motion right now to approve this. Prime delivery, so. So if there's nobody else, except this, except this bid.
There's a motion.
I'll second.
There's a second. Mr. Betts, are you back in?
Yeah, just a quick additional comment.
Yeah.
And I'm not as hopeful that it'll go unnoticed once it goes in, but we'll hope that I don't walk across there and notice it, so. The, the street further to the west, when you come out of the other side of Pearson Plaza, they're coming down a hill, and that seems to me to have been a very, it's tough to pull out of there, and there's not going to be a signal there, and I'm wondering if this signal here is going to cause people to run even quicker on their approach to this light. Is there something we can do to make that a right turn only or something? And also, there's some, there's some type of, something's going to need to be done there, is my idea. It's already a bad intersection now, if you're pulling out, heading north and turning left. What's the name of that street? Is it?
And you said to the east or the west?
It's to the west. It's one street further to the west. Anyhow, and then the speed limit along there is still 45. Is that getting adjusted with this?
Okay, now we're getting a little past the purview of what this item is.
Well, I'm worried about this signal causing additional traffic.
You're stretching a little bit, but I'll let you go.
All right.
We'll look into that street on the west. I can't recall which one it is, so we'll look into making it a right turn only.
Okay, or at least take a look, since it's probably in the scope and purview of this project area, so if not.
Bring it, talk to the city manager, maybe we'll bring it back as a separate item to talk about.
Okay. All right, so that was it. Oh, these are, shoot, okay, that's it, I'm done.
All right. We've got a motion and a second. Is there any more discussion? Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
All right, we'll move on to item number eight. This is a resolution of a tent to annex one parcel, annex number 35, located east of Little Morongo and south of 14th Avenue, APN 665-030-051, to the City of Desert Hot Springs Community Facilities District Number 2010-1 Services. This is our acting financial director, Jeffrey Buckheim.
Yes, so the annexation of this property, as well as the parcel in the next agenda item, agenda item number nine, they are adjacent to parcels owned by the same company, belonging to Lenwin Hospitality, that is constructing a cannabis facility on 14th Avenue, east of Little Morongo Road. This is a resolution of the city's intention to annex the, to annex this property and the adjacent property into the, I'm sorry, into the Community Facility District 2010-1, which was created by resolution July 6, 2010, to provide for levying of special taxes to provide for landscaping, lining, and other maintenance items for the city. So staff recommends that, that we adopt a resolution declaring its intention to annex territory to Community Facility District Number 2010-1 of the City of Desert Hot Springs, adopting a map of the area proposed to be annexed, annexation number 35, and the next agenda item, we know annexation number 36, and to authorize a levy of special taxes therein. The public hearing would be expected to be held on Tuesday, November 5.
Thank you for that report on both items, all in one, wrapped up. We're going to take the first item, number eight, which is the annexation number 35. Do we have any public comments on that? And we'll close public comments and entertain questions. There is no questions. We'll entertain a motion.
Move staff recommendation.
There's a motion by Ms. Pye, a second by Mr. Gardner. No other comments. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Item number nine is the resolution of a tent to annex one parcel, number, annexation number 36, located east of Little Morongo Road and south of 14th Avenue, APN 665-030-052, to the City of Desert Hot Springs Community Facilities District Number 2010-1 Services. The report by the city staff has already been given. Is there any public comments on this item? I see nobody coming forth. I will close public comments. Any questions? We entertain a motion. There is a motion by Mr. Griffith, a second by Mr. Gardner. Any questions? Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Item number 10 is DHS Bike Lanes and ADA Improvement Project, Riverside County Transportation Commission, RCTC, Agreement for Funding under Senate Bill SB 821 Bicycle Pedestrian Facilities Program. Our Public Works Director, Mr. Porras.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. February of 2019, Riverside County Transportation Commission, RCTC, released a call for projects, seeking applications for projects from cities or counties for bicycle and pedestrian facilities. The city submitted a grant application for the DHS Bike Lane and ADA Improvement Project. That project is located on Palm Drive from Pearson Boulevard to 8th Street, and the scope of work includes the installation of half a mile of bike lanes on both sides, narrowing the lane widths for traffic calming, and replacing ADA ramps with current ADA standards. The project is estimated to cost $631,000, and the city requested $300,000, which is about 48% from SB 821 funding. On May?
Sorry, one second. Mr. Betts didn't realize how close it was.
This is going from Palm and Pearson, north, correct?
Correct.
Okay, originally, I looked at this, I thought it was up a few blocks and out of the area, so I had the same proximity recusal, and.
All right, sorry, go ahead and continue with your report.
On May 20, 2019, RCTC notified city staff that the grant application was reviewed and was ranked third out of 35 applications. On June 12, RCTC approved the top 12 grant applications, which included the DHS Bike Lane and ADA Improvement Project, with a total award of $300,000.0. The funding will be available on reimbursing basis, and the project must be completed within the first two years. Staff is recommending that city council authorize the city manager to execute the funding agreement between Riverside County Transportation Commission and the City of Desert Hot Springs to receive SB 820 funding totaling $300,000 for the DHS Bike Lane and ADA Improvement Project. The project design will, the release of RFP for the design will be in December. The design will be completed by October 2020, and the construction will be completed by June 2021. That concludes my staff report. I'm glad to answer any questions.
All right, I have nobody in the queue at this point. Would anybody like to speak on this item public? I have nobody coming forth. I'll close public comments. I just want to make, ask a question. On these projects, how far, when do you get a notice that you have to apply for these, and when's the next cycle?
This, the SB 821s are every two years. The next notice would go out, well, at least they have been every two years. It depends on the remaining funds from the previous year, so it would be on 2021 when we get the next cycle.
Okay.
And it gets to the beginning of the year sometime.
Is it our last cycle? We did the Desert View project?
Correct.
Okay, and then the cycle. Just a suggestion, and for the future, is that since we're going all the way up to Mission Lakes Boulevard, maybe we head down Mission Lakes Boulevard. We have a lot of bicyclists that like to travel. I don't know how they get up those hills all the way to Mission Lakes Boulevard, but they love to take that hill up Palm Drive and go down Little Morongo, or go down Mission Lakes towards either Indian or whatever it is that they take. But maybe in the future, we just continue that, down that way, so. That's just my suggestion for the next cycle. Any questions on this cycle? All right, I have no other questions, no comments. I'll entertain a motion. There is a motion by Mr. Griffith, a second by Ms. Pye. No questions in the dais or in the queue. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
I'll let Mr. Betts come back in the room. There's, any future agenda items can be discussed with the city manager's office. Public comments? Anybody that did not have a chance to speak at the beginning of the meeting would like to speak now in public comments, items that are on the agenda. I see nobody coming forth.